Andrew, last meeting. Do you want to do the honors and open?
You got it. You have a chair, my friend.
I'll see to you for a minute.
All right.
One minute on the clock.
All right, so we will, we will begin this meeting of the Montpelier Roxbury Public School Board at 6:34 PM. I don't have an agenda in front of me just yet, so give me a second here.
I don't think you need one.
Yeah. Public comment.
Read, I'm happy to read that.
Yeah, if you want to, go ahead.
And maybe in the meantime, people who want to do public comment that are on Zoom, they can start by raising their hand so that we could get.
Yeah, great call.
Yeah, actually.
On, oh, I see. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I wonder if we can get a sense of how many public, because we have a lot of people on the call, and if we have a bunch, I think we should, because we have a time limit on our presenter from the Vermont Equity Coalition. So I, if we have a bunch of people on public comment, we might just have to do like 30 seconds or a minute, so.
Quick instructions on how to raise hands.
Yeah.
Please.
So if you're on Zoom and you're interested in speaking, the best way to let us know is to go, if you click down at the bottom to the participant list, it will open up a participant list off to the right. And then, once the participant list is open, you should be able to scroll and find your name. Usually, it's at the top. And then, click on reactions, right at the bottom, and raise hand.
And I see three raised hands. I see like Joel, Lincoln, and Liza, and Alex.
And I see Ethan.
And then Ethan is actually raising his hand.
Yeah.
It actually looks like you could just click on reactions at the bottom. There's a toolbar at the bottom. Click on reactions. And then, you might need to click on more. There's a whole bunch of different reactions, like clapping hands and a coffee cup and all of that. And then, you have to click on the raise hand button.
Sorry, Ethan, we, we, we saw your hand. We'll get to you. All right, should we just go?
So are we going to start with Joe?
Joe, do you want to read first and then?
Sure, I'm reading comments that were just sent to us at the board by Jolinda Burton. To the MRPS School Board, I would appreciate if you would include the following in tonight's public comments. I apologize, I cannot be there in person. My thoughts are regarding yesterday's letter from Superintendent Libby Bonesteel to district families regarding the change of in-school mask mandate announced yesterday. Listening to the governor's press conference yesterday, which included data and context from Health Commissioner Levine and Education Secretary French, I understood this shift in recommendation to be a result of weighing the science and medical data, balancing the overall public health cost and benefit, and to be a determination that the cost of wearing masks all day in school is no longer justified by the benefit from a medical and epidemiological perspective. In her letter yesterday, Libby shared this change in mandate not with that data and context, but with opinion that while it will now be a personal decision, wearing masks in school is still the right thing to do. Libby equated students continuing to wear a mask with caring for each other after, parentheses, after the Vermont Health Department sanctioned removing masks in school, period. I found that at minimum confusing and at most potentially divisive amongst students and staff, what about caring for those with anxiety around wearing masks or who can barely be understood through a mask? This district has navigated the pandemic incredibly well, I think most would agree, and it's been by following the state's medical and scientific data and advice. This letter, however, diverges from that without giving database reasoning. The letter references, quote, "positive cases still occurring in our community," end quote, as a reason to continue wearing masks. So what will the MRPS administration choose as a low enough bar to remove masks? And are health professionals consulted on that? The mental health of MRPS students and families two years into this is not good. Students, many too young to grasp what we're living through, have been told to stay away from each other, stay silent while eating, only play with certain groups, stay in line rather than run around outside and cover their noses and mouths, but still manage to be discernible by each other, parentheses, not to mention trying to understand what all the masked adults are saying, end parentheses. Masks have been a key mitigation tool in the transmission of COVID, but now our state administration recommends that to balance our mental and physical health of our students, it's time to drop masks in school, time for kids to fully see and hear each other again. I'm not an educator, but I know a little about transitions, and I humbly suggest that the schools plan to transition students from wearing masks all day to not wearing them at all. Wait, sorry, to not wearing them all day. Start by removing masks outside and incorporating eating lunch in the cafeteria. For those that would like them, add in-class mask breaks when students have plenty of space, and so on. Make it an opportunity for students to practice empathy and inclusion with their classmates. We can follow the guidance and be gentle with our children at the same time. Students and much of the community have been working really hard to get to a point where it is safe to do this. We can make this moment an opportunity to share the joy and hard-won fruits of our labor with them and with each other. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to be heard. Sincerely, Jolinda Burton, parent of second grader and kindergartner.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. And just, since we have a number of public comments, in case it's your first time attending a board meeting, I just want to qualify that the board receives input during public comments, but unless it's a public session set up for an exchange, the board doesn't typically go back and forth so that we can move through our agenda in a timely fashion, just so everyone is aware. Please feel free to reach out to us again outside of the board meeting if you'd like to have a conversation. Anyone else want to add anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think, given the fact that we have time limits for people on the agenda, please keep your minutes, your comments to one minute or less. Less would be better. Try not to repeat something someone has said. You can endorse it without re-saying it. And I don't mean to limit public comment at all, but if this drags out for too long, we're, we're gonna lose time for people who prepare presentations for the board. So, thank you.
All right, let's start with Joel.
Thank you. I also applaud the move away from mandated masking in Montpelier Public Schools. We'll never live in a world without managed risk, but we still climb trees, take our kids hiking in tick-ridden woods, swim in muddy lakes. We still ski and sled and snowboard. Life is too rich to hide from it, even though that makes us a tiny bit safer. My three children, including two with special needs that are specifically impacted by having their faces covered and the faces of others hidden, deserve every opportunity afforded to the generations before them, the privilege to smile and to be seen. And we deserve district leadership that does not frame us as uncaring villains. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Joel. Thanks, Joel. Thanks for the brevity.
Lincoln and Liza?
Hi, thanks. I want to cheer for this decision and also share Jolinda's concerns about the framing with the letter saying that an action that shows we care may be to continue to wear a mask. And I, I really think it's, from that letter, I, if I were a teacher in our school district, I would not feel comfortable unmasking for my class. And I think it's really important that we also show that a sign of caring is unmasking, so your students can hear you better and so that your friends, who are English language learners, can see your lips or your friends who are hard of hearing. And that care could mean smiling to appear. I personally know two high school youth in this district at Montpelier High School who have been suicidal this year. One has attempted suicide, and I know a seventh grader in another school district. So literally, unmasking and smiling could save a life of your peer. And so I really hope that the leadership of our school district can reframe what it means to care in many diverse ways. As a teacher for the past 20 years, my smile has always been my most important tool. Establishing community, reassuring after a mistake, adding humor, reduces anxiety and promotes moods. I do worry about the timing of this. There has been an uptick in cases after every single vacation. So I want to caution us that an uptick in cases is not to be blamed on the unmasking and that we need to prepare for that and hold strong because cases are going down. I think it's great, the antigen test that will go out, so hopefully people use those and will just not come to the school if they test positive. I also want to point out, in the press conference yesterday, Secretary French specifically referred to some local mitigations that have been in practice that should not have been in practice, and these are masking kids outdoors. That goes against the guidance of the Vermont Department of Ed from this fall. And having kids not speak during classes. The elementary school kids have been watching movies every day in their classrooms so that they're not talking, and Secretary French said absolutely not, that kids need to talk during lunch and they need to be able to see each other's faces at recess. So I just hope we can reflect on that as a community. Montpelier rallies around going above and beyond the recommendations, and I think that actually we need to be aware that this can cause more damage than good.
And I would just add a couple of points to what speakers have said before. What hasn't been mentioned is a concern that I have that we are explicitly, at this point, linking taking masks off to vaccination status. So I see that our school district is not going to be inviting the youngest kids, the pre-K kids, to be unmasking. And I think that that's, that sounds like it's based on them not being available to get vaccines and that school districts that haven't reached the 80% mark are also being discriminated against to not have their kids have a choice that, that, and Roxbury included in that in our school district, that that feels wrongly coercive to me as a parent in our community, that everybody has the opportunity and has heard the arguments for this mitigation. And if people are deciding not to do it, then they shouldn't be penalized for that. And all the data about our pre-K kids are clear from my perspective, from what I've read, that the risks to their development far outweigh the very small risks that they have from COVID and, and having bad illness or ramifications from COVID. So I, I encourage us to reconsider as a school district, those two milestones. That's all.
All right, Alex Brush.
Hi, I'm a 10th grader at MHS. I wasn't planning on speaking. I just, I had the letter yesterday. It caught me off guard. I live with my grandparents and who's, who are immunocompromised, as well as my high-risk stepfather. And I directly oppose this, even though I know it's a state decision, not a directly affected based on you guys. And I just want to make sure y'all are like putting all the precautions to make sure COVID doesn't spread, which inevitably will with the lift of mandatory maskings. And want to make sure y'all just know that this is gonna directly harm the student body of not only Montpelier High School, but all the schools in the district.
Thanks, Alex. I'm Ethan Park.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to endorse the speakers ahead of me who have applauded the lifting of the school mask mandate. I'd also like to thank our superintendent for her email yesterday. I know there's been some friction around the framing, but I still think that she has taken a courageous position, and it's a position that appears to be in line with the governor and the Health Commissioner and the Secretary of Education. So I'm all in favor of lifting this mandate. I'm the father of a third grader at UES. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. All right, I think that's all the public comments, and what's missing? One, I don't think I am.
You could offer two. If people didn't get it, figure out how to raise their hand, you could just unmute and say that you have public comment.
If anybody else has an additional comment, please unmute yourself and, and let us know. Seeing none. All right, we're gonna move forward with the consent agenda. He, he, they already spoke. Apologies.
I will, I'm the consent agenda with the addition of the third resignation letter and the appointment of Christina Kimble to business manager.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right.
So did you want to discuss the, those two items?
No, we just had to add them verbally. They weren't written on the consent agenda.
Good.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, I was like.
Yeah, I just, when you said those, I, I like, usually you remove them, so my, uh,
Nope.
my brain was, was going on autopilot.
Yeah, mine did the same. And in fact, I just realized I had the former. All right, so board discussion, student representation on the board. You want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, so I'm just for context, for those who are listening, this board has almost always had a student representative or two as part of the board. And that sort of fell off the radar during COVID, and we are reviving that practice of having student representatives on the board. We put out a call to students in high school and I think also middle school. Is that right, Libby?
Again, two from middle school? I'm sorry.
Did we end up extending the offer to middle school students or no?
If you didn't, if you didn't do it, we didn't do it.
Okay, I remember having an email. It's okay, but I remember having an email exchange with you where I asked if you wanted me to reach out to the principal, if you would prefer to reach out to the principal on that. Anyway, there was a couple of middle school students that reached out. They had heard about the opportunity, but they didn't end up applying. So we did extend it to high, the high school students, and Matt McLean helped us sort of spread the word. If any high school student was interested in serving on the board, that they could apply. They had about a month to do so, and many of them, or all of them, are here tonight to address the board, and then we'll discuss the appointments. We're going to be appointing two student representatives to the board. And I believe the, the idea being that they would serve through the end of the school year. Is that correct? Jim?
Yes.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll be doing that during executive session, and then when we come back from executive session, we'll announce the, the two appointments. And if people are not present, if the applicants are not present, when we announce, I will just be sending out an email to all applicants, letting you know who was appointed. So I think we can go ahead and, and allow the students who came to address the board about their interest in, in serving in this capacity.
Sounds great.
How about we just go in the order that they're listed on the agenda?
Let's do it.
So Merrick, you're listed first. So yeah, if you could come to the table, just so that you're at that microphone, that'd be great.
All right, members of the Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools Board, good evening. My name is Merrick Moden, and I'm a junior at Montpelier High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all and to present the reasons why I should be your next student representative. Now, what would I bring to the school board? Well, first, I'm an active and contributing member in various groups, including Montpelier High School's Gender and Sexuality Alliance, Racial Justice Alliance, and Student Council, to groups in our community, such as Montpelier's Complete Streets Commission, as well as the recently formed MRPS Vision Committee, among others. I will be able to draw from all these places when bringing my voice and input to every meeting. I cannot understate the importance of this. Having a wide range of views that I, and thus the board, can take into consideration when discussing significant issues is extremely valuable. Additionally, I would be a valuable representative because I provide an LGBTQ+ perspective myself. Second, the very reason I stand before you all today is because I am passionate about change and helping our community improve and thrive. I care deeply about my peers' voices and the school community, and I want to do everything I can to ensure that everyone across the district is adequately heard and represented. As a measure of this, if appointed, I can commit right now to working with the other student representative to organize regular meetings across the district, where we can gauge what our fellow peers want to focus on and bring to the school board. Third, I'm a strong listener, planner, and hard worker. The various commitments that I have and dedication that I have to those highlights these traits and also show that I am prepared for the extra work that being a student representative will require. Now, I want to thank you all for your time, consideration, and enthusiasm in this process, and I sincerely hope that you select me as your next representative. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next person is Meg.
Hi, I'm Meg Bojan. I'm a 10th grader here at the high school. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a part of many sports and clubs here at the high school, including the Student Council and also Earth Group. I do sports season, all three seasons that we offer them, and I have a widespread like experience with different communities at the school. I think it's a really awesome opportunity that we have student voice that could be on this board now. I know there was a little gap, and I think it's really great that we're bringing it back in making decisions as part of this board.
Thank you. Is Caleb, Caleb, are you on Zoom? Have you joined us via Zoom? I can't see all the participants. So if you are, if you are present, if you could unmute yourself and they could be joined from somebody else's computer, right? Okay, looks like Caleb, Caleb wasn't able to join us, but if, if Caleb, if you are there and you want to speak later, we can move you to the bottom of the line. May?
Hello, my name is Maeve Byrne. I'm a current junior at Montpelier High School. I would be a good member on your board because I am a hard-working student who is part of many sports and clubs at our school. With my hard work, I know that people need to be represented, especially in this unprecedented time of COVID. Our students need to know their voices are being heard, that they are safe, and that we're gonna do everything in our power to like make their experience at the school better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maeve.
Noel, it looks like you are joined via Zoom. Would you like to address the board? You could unmute and speak.
Hi, I'm Noel Westbaum, and I would like to join the, like to give my perspective to the school board because I've had a lot of different educational experiences in the past, and I am also very passionate about being able to improve our community in any ways possible. Thank you for offering this opportunity to people at the school.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay, Zachary, I see that you're, you've joined. Would you like to address the board?
Yeah. Hi, folks. My name is Zach Hennington. I'm a junior at Montpelier High School, and I want to thank you for taking the time to consider my peers and I as student representatives on the school board. The inclusion of students' voices is vital to any equitable and functioning school system, and I'm incredibly grateful that our district is offering this opportunity in the first place. My interest in this position stems from the main principle of including students' voices. I previously served on the School Resource Officer Oversight Committee with a few of my peers, and that experience only led me to wonder what more could be done for the school district community as a whole. One of the tasks we did for that work was survey state older groups, parents, students, faculty, and community members. For all the students on the survey who answered about how uncomfortable and just how unsafe they felt at school, how can we stand to support them? Students and teachers are the ones living the reality of being in the building every day, and especially in a time like COVID, it is essential to hear from the affected populations. Another part of my interest is directly connected to the work I do with Outright Vermont as a youth organizer. I actually participated in facilitating a space of LGBTQ+ community members in regards to ESAR funding. And the reason for my participation in that facilitation, as it's told when I arrived at the meeting, was because no one on the current school board identified as LGBTQ+. As an LGBTQ+ person in this district, hearing that only further motivated me to apply. How can a board support the needs of an entire group of people whose voices are often underrepresented if no one there shares the lived experience, especially in regards to supporting trans youth? The fact that there even was an opportunity for students and community members to come share about their needs in regards to the ESAR funding shows that the board is aware that input is needed, and I'd encourage the board to continue the inclusion of just different perspectives and voices. Student input and advocacy should be easily accessible, and including students on the board who represent underserved communities is the first step to making everyone feel safe and supported in and out of the school building. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you so much, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
Yeah, I, I know that after we received all of the letters of interest, I got a lot of emails from my fellow board members just expressing profuse thanks for all of you who have applied. It's, it's a really great candidate pool, and we're, we're just so thrilled and excited that you all applied. So thank you so much. We're gonna move to the other part of our agenda with the waiting study. Did you, did you want to? We don't want to do any questions or anything like that.
No, we don't. I mean, I want to reiterate the thanks, the, um, the interest was overwhelming. I've been on the board for, what, going on six or seven years now, and we've never had this many people step up. And I know it could be a little hiatus, but before that, you know, the, the interest level is through the roof this year, and I really appreciate everyone stepping up and wanting to do this. This is a really important thing. Since, yeah, just thank you, and it's amazing to see this much interest in, in the board, so.
So yeah, we have one more agenda item, and then we will move into executive session. And then we'd likely be back here around eight. Well, depending on how it goes.
Yeah.
Around 8:30.
I know it's seven now. It, it might be a long night for, for, for you all, so I might, you know, maybe tune in on Zoom.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Everyone, you know, on Zoom or in person, you're welcome to stay or go. I will definitely be emailing after the meeting, the decision that was made, and also you're able to access either the Zoom feed or the live YouTube, either way. So, but I just don't want you to feel like you're beholden to, to stay either on Zoom or in person. Okay.
And we'll, we'll communicate with everyone to apply.
Yes, immediately after the meeting, I'll send an email.
Yeah, and I'll tell you right now that we wish we could give you all.
Yes.
Definitely.
Coalition of Vermont Student Equity.
Hi, good evening. My name's Mark Schaber. I'm the Executive Director for Coalition for Vermont Student Equity. I'm here tonight with Alex and Rory. And I'm going to turn it over to them to do a brief presentation for you. I was wondering whether I could share my screen. I've got a few slides for you all.
I think so. Anna is.
Libby's giving us a thumbs up.
Yes, so yes, you can.
Great.
Should be able to, Mark. Let me know if you can't.
Okay, thanks, Libby.
Oh, wait.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. And this, this presentation is also available at mrps.cvtse.org. It's a PDF that, that you can download. And with that, I will turn it over to Rory and Alex.
Good evening, Rory Tebow. I'm the Cabit School Board Chair, and I'm one of the directors for the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity. And I want to share, we're gonna next slide, just start off with a brief overview of who we are, a little bit of the history of why this is a hot topic today, and then where we're heading in this, that current legislative session. So the Vermont Coalition for Student Equity was formed last year in response to forward movement on, in legislative action on the 2019 People Waiting Factors Report. And in a broad sense, this is the first hard look at Vermont's education finance system, or the most comprehensive look at our system since the time of Brigham and Act 60 back in the late 90s. So the coalition exists today really to advocate for ensuring that Vermont's General Education Fund and other funds are equitably distributed to districts that need them in a way that fits really Vermont values and is consistent with the empirical data collected in that waiting. that need them in a way that fits really Vermont values and is consistent with the empirical data collected in that Waiting Factors Report. The coalition is comprised of school board members, superintendents, business managers, legislators and a few other members of the general public. If we go to the next slide. There's a significant amount of geographic reach. Member districts are spread throughout 11 counties, representing 80 different towns and cities and about 19,000 of Vermont's current student population. One of the things I like to remark on is this, that if you look at the map, it's, we're geographically distributed throughout the state and a lot of the districts that are participating on face, if you take them at face value, you wouldn't necessarily have a lot in common. And I think that highlights the reality that while the post Brigham and Act 60 structure worked well for a long time, the time has come to take a hard look at it. And that's particularly true. Play, my home district of Cabot, a district like Peacham are about as different as you can get in terms of population size, both being very rural communities versus member communities such as Winuski or Burlington, for example, which are really the heart of our metropolitan part of Vermont up in Chitting County. So with that said, there's a broad range of stakeholders who are interested throughout the state. So how we got here, as mentioned before, over 25 years ago, the Brigham decision required that Vermont students have substantially equal educational opportunities and that meant breaking down the barriers of property-rich towns versus property-poor towns and the struggle that came with that. Of course, integral of this, as you are no strangers to, as school board members, we live and die when it comes to tax rate and other factors by the number of equalized pupils that we have. It's foundational to the system that we divide our education spending by that number. However, just you know, stratifying students by, by number based on whether they're in high school, middle school, elementary school or pre-K doesn't necessarily address or speak to particular demographic needs or the needs of those communities. And this is particularly cute as Alex will talk about when we start considering things like English language learners in our community and the impacts of poverty. So in the last two, three years, there's been a substantial move to really studying this issue and understanding how we should best weight pupils for purposes of looking at tax rate and taxing capacity in these communities. Next slide, please. So final thoughts before I turn this over to Alex to take over the presentation. You know, the weights are important for a number of reasons and when we look, I, I think that when making the pitch to another school board as a school member, there's another option out there called cost equity that would effectively be for a district like Cabot, we will get it as small school granted steroids, this uncertain number each year coming from the Agency of Education based upon some similar factors, but different in terms of more or less granting, sending grant money or in effect subsidizing districts. We believe in, in the coalition that weights are better mainly because it's predictable, it shifts with demographics. And I think, you know, Vermont is poised for some significant demographic changes in the near future, especially as we consider at a systems and policy level, the addition of refugee families to our communities or those from out of state. The likelihood of different demographics and particularly more English language learners in our system are particularly acute. And we think that staying with the weight system is more predictable and easier to manage at the district level. So with that, I'll turn this over to Alex, who's going to have some more comments and talk about some more of what the coalition is doing and where we stand today.
Hi, my name is Alex Yin and I'm also a member of the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity, but I'm also on the school board for Winuski. And there's often like many like changes when you're thinking about like why weights versus grants and weights to me, i- in just as a simplified form, it's just the notion that it costs certain, weights allow us to better adjust to see the, the accounts for students because we know that educationally, that it costs more to educate certain students or it costs, and I hate to use the word costs, really about investment. And, and we need certain investments to help educate certain students to reach a equal level of outcomes. And, and that's how we see it play out in, in Winuski in the sense that we know that it, it does have additional costs for the students that we serve, not because necessarily just also in the classroom, but because of things like how do we translate our materials for our English language learners' parents? Because we, we find it invaluable for our students to also have their families be involved in education, things that that, that are characteristics of things that sometimes when you're in the majority crowd that you take for granted and you don't know. And, and one of the reasons why we prefer weights over grants is that grants sometime come from legislation and they make mandates on how you have to spend the money to a certain way and then you have to document it in every format. And it takes away the local control, whereas weights, it's about giving us the general fund and allowing the superintendent in the school board the flexibility to actually use the money for the student, for the programs that we believe that are important. As you all well know, that we're moving to a universal design learning type of format too, to make it really more inclusive. And having that integration of our students, English language learners with our other students enriches the educational experience of all students. And I think that is just way too difficult when we think about grants and as I've mentioned in many ways, when I've been testifying, is that like, it's hard to hold legislators in a different county accountable for the brands that they're going to give us. Whereas I want to be accountable being a school board member in my school district and showing that we're educating students. And as a school board member, I am constantly also looking out for the outcomes of our students in terms of whether they're meeting. And there are some outcomes when, when I sit in on our jampos and Winuski, which are our, our demonstration of proficiency education in our school that I've been impressed. And I, and I know that, that's why I believe in the faith of our local school board and why I think weights are the way to go as opposed to grants. Um, next slide, Mark. So where are we today in, in, in many ways? And, and when you look at it, like the Senate Finance drafted a bill deciding between, they're, they're trying to decide between cost equity and weights, which is cost equity is like reverse funding grants and stuff. Senate Education is, is deciding between EL as a grant versus EL as a weight and using that potentially a hybrid approach. House Ways and Means are working on the education finance restructuring, likely to receive a bill from the Senate. And the House Education hasn't even started on the people waiting, but are waiting to discuss as a possible Act 173. So there's still so much work, but we all have agreed around the legislation and all this is that the current system is not working and we need to make changes. And we're hoping that we'll buy a, a school district like you joining us will help us move further and actually creating a more equitable education funding system. Next slide, Mark. Um, so this is how the kind of impact that would have on the different models and simulations. And we can get more into details. Um, there's the link here for you to look at what it means in terms of your taxing capacity. And remember taxing capacity does not mean necessarily your tax rate, it's just giving you the option, the flexibility on how, how you will, how much money you can actually use and then convince your residents to actually vote and support the educational needs of your students and stuff. And here's how it works in the different levels. I think, I, I gotta admit, like, sometimes this gets get way into the weeds and I'm sure Mark or Rory or I would be happy to speak more in detail off, offline or, or even more to go through the mathematical equations that you need to go and understanding our taxing system. And finally, I just want to, before we leave and, and really open it up for questions from the board. The next slide just basically says, if you're thinking about joining us, there's no membership dues, but because we, we, we are all volunteers, I gotta admit, like, we all have our day jobs and top of the school board, but then so we have actually helped get externals help with the lobbyists and so donations are strongly incurred. This is our really only source of revenue to help pay for our lobbyists to make sure that they keep us informed on what's going on, on a day, day-to-day basis of what's going on. The AOE's General Counsel has said donations to a 5100C4 such as CBS, TSER and acceptable use of state educational fund. Just to give you a hint, just last week, our school board in Winuski actually authorized a $2,000 on contribution to this because we know how important it is for this, for us to work on it. And I'll, I'll just leave. If you're interested in joining, make sure you contact Mark, but I just need this one final note, like when we started on this journey of a bunch of school boards came together. I, I, I actually set out, came out strong and told the group, like, the only reason I'm doing this is because I see that this is an opportunity to actually, um, like unite the rural and the, in the urban school districts in Vermont because education and equity is important for all. And it isn't, I'm not doing this just for Winuski. I'm really doing this because I believe that this will help benefit all children in Vermont. And I think that is the ultimate goal of this coalition. So I think at this moment, I'd love to open it up for questions for people that, to ask between Rory and I and Mark.
Thank you so much.
Questions?
Presentation didn't have been that good.
Well, I just want to thank you. I've been part of the listeners. I've been kind of listening in for the past year, but haven't been able to put things in my brain to get here. So I guess in terms of the, your actual coalition, you have individual school boards and you have individual school board members and the school boards as a whole that voted in for your coalition. Is that, is that right?
So our, our membership is made up of, of school district boards and supervisor union boards who are represented by individual school board members. And we also have, like Rory talked about, some superintendents and business managers that, that are active with the organization and help steer our policy decisions.
Yeah, and so I, I'm wondering if some school board members are not representing their whole school board because there's no consensus, just trying to figure that out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Any school board member is welcome to, to join and be a part of the, the coalition. Even if their board has, has chosen not to, not to join, absolutely.
And then what do you think is the priority right now in terms of pushing for the, we've been thinking and talking a lot about the ELL piece of it and I'm just wondering where you think that's going?
I think priorities for that is like, you know, do the recommendations of researchers of Rutgers and UVM have said and really push weights, but also weights for ELL students because it makes no sense to exclude them from the, the counting system. It, it seems even discriminatory in, in my opinion.
I'll, I'll just add that Senate Finance, I'm sorry, Senate Education will, will probably be boarding on a recommendation later this week to Senate Finance to go with the weights for ELL. It's something that the coalition has been pushing very hard on and we do believe that that's the direction that they're going to take at this point. Of course, what happens when the bill gets over to the House, assuming it gets to the Senate, is a whole nother story. There'll be a lot of, lot of work to be done over there.
Hi, thank you so much for coming tonight and giving such a great presentation. I also, I had a question around the hybrid, the potential for a hybrid option being proposed and where your coalition stands, stands on that and, and what that would look like, like what, what would exactly the hybrid be between waiting and grants?
So, um, the proposal that's being made in Senate Education regards to ELL is the position that we've actually been advocating for, which is to implement the ELL weight as recommended by the UVM and Rutgers study. And then for districts that have low incidence ELLs, a number of ELL students to provide a, a small grant on top of that so to, they can ensure to, that they have the necessary resources to build up their program as needed. The recommendation that we believe is going to be coming out of Senate Education is for a grant somewhere in the range of $25,000 to $50,000 on top of the weights. And, and we absolutely, that is by far, we believe the, the best situation possible at this point.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, I mean, so the comment, this is complex and I have not dealt nearly as deeply into it as I would like to. I really like the idea of the weights and the flexibility it gives districts. That has a lot of appeal. Just a question, what sort of safeguards can or will be built in to ensure that the money is actually distributed to the students that really need it? I mean, I think if you give districts too much flexibility with the money, is there a temptation that they might, you know, not increase spending, but just let property taxes go down and, and not, you know, and that money not, might not trickle to where it's needed, which is the students?
So coming from a, you know, rural district that's persistently under the old system bumping up against the excess spending threshold, that's not necessarily a marker of inefficiency. It's a function that we have a lot of students with additional needs and our discretionary spending is typically totally wiped out by urgent, you know, facilities needs that come up year to year or alternatively. We have a significantly above average number of students who receive special services. So for us, we need the breathing room to have spending capacity for just the regular operations. You know, for example, we had to close a playground because we can't find $60,000 spare in the budget to replace it. And that's the type of choices that are happening in a lot of the smaller rural districts, even right here in, in Washington County. And you know, so I think that there may be an anomalous district here and there that will want to realize some tax savings, but I think that for many districts like Cabot, we need a little bit more to be on a level playing field. And again, I, I don't think the work of AOE or the state is going to stop in terms of trying to ensure efficiency that our, you know, student to faculty ratios are in accord with where the state wants us to be. But that's somewhat separate from this, just baseline of how we can equitably access state education funds.
Also just gonna admit, like in watching how we progressed throughout this whole thing and I've watched parents and and teachers and superintendents come out and constantly protest, I actually haven't heard any of them really say like, hey, you know, we want to do this because we don't believe in investing in our community and like, we want to hold the tax capacity low. Because I think in the long run, and, and I, and I was amazed by how many students actually want to be on your community that they're going to hold you accountable to, to make sure that you're spending the needs right, like, 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 and, and the same thing in Winuski, we're going to have our students that are going to be telling us like, hey, like, what are you doing there on the school board? Like, there's a lot of checks and balances by keeping it in the local control arena. And if you're a school board in anything, and this is something that we work closely with the, when we went, made a, a pitch to build our new school in Winuski, you know, I think all of us often believe that the school district is the heart of our community. If you don't take care of your heart, you're not going to have a long community in the long term and I think, but giving us the taxing capacity to actually spend wisely, judicially and, and making wise investments in our children will pay off for not only our school districts and our students, but also our communities because they will want to come back and stay in the community for the long term.
I, I think we've found, I, I know my experiences, I, I have not spoken to a single board member who has any desire to reduce taxes with the additional taxing capacity. These underweight districts have been hungry for the resources for, you know, up to a quarter century at this point. And are going to take advantage of, of every dollar that they can possibly get their hands on. And I'll, I'd also say that the State Board of Ed is, is opening up EQS standards, the, the EQS rules. And we are advocating for stronger EQS rules. So that would be how school boards and districts are held accountable.
Excellent. That's super, super helpful. See, Libby has her hand up.
Yeah, I was just curious, Mark, if we go back, you just, you said a couple of comments ago when you were talking about where the process is in the legislature about you weren't sure what the House was going to do about it. I was wondering if you could like say more about that. I'm, I'm very curious about what your thoughts are from the legislative process.
Well, um, House, like I said, House Education or Rory said, or Alex, somebody said, um, House Education hasn't started taking this up yet. So it's really hard to know where, where their heads are at. House Ways and Means has been looking at education funding since the beginning of, of the session. And there are a number of members of that, that committee that are advocating for the cost equity, the, the grants model. So, you know, our, our hope is that they will take a bill that is sent from the Senate that advocates for the weights and make it better, not worse by changing it to, to the, the. and make it better, not worse by changing it to to the the grant program that they've, the task force had recommended alongside the weights.
That's helpful. I'm on, I'm in the Vermont Superintendent's Trustees Group as a trustee for Washington County and there are five or six of us that testified to Senate Finance a couple of weeks ago and and to to a person in the trustees group, as well as the people who testified, were all in favor of the equity equity version of the bill. So we hope that that, that's why I was curious is if we need to do more advocating for that, we certainly will, because the trustees are behind the equity. The equity idea or the waiting idea, I'm sorry, the waiting idea.
When when it moves over to the House, I your testimony will will be invaluable. There is no question that that having the number of superintendents lined up and to a T all agreeing made a difference in the eyes of of the Senate Finance.
I think it totally did too. Yeah.
So thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. Thank you all for for coming tonight. And I appreciate, I appreciate this issue that you've been working on. It's it's an important one to our state. In terms of the cost equity model, and I realize you're, I'm asking you to explain something that you're kind of opposing, but just just for this board who is really just waiting into this issue. Can you explain what the proponents of the cost equity model are championing, championing, like why? What are the advantages of that model, alleged advantages of that model that a number of legislators are are interested in for?
So let's start with simplicity. We all know how complicated our education funding system is. We're all board members and have to deal with making, you know, putting budgets together annually. A fully grant run model would be a lot easier. We that would do away with the concept of equalized pupils. And would go a use of long term ATM instead. So it would be closer to the actual number of students in our schools. So there's there's simplicity. And a number of legislators believe that it is actually more equitable. I have a really hard time understanding it because the concept of of cost equity is they take an average of the the spending throughout the state and that's the amount that is provided to every school district for every child, every student of that type of, who's that type of learner? And in essence, in the presentation, one of the slides we didn't go over towards the end, there's a picture of a bell curve. And in essence, what the cost equity model does is you'd have a handful of districts that are right in center that are getting exactly what they need. And then the remainder of the districts are split in half. Half of them are going to be getting more than they need and half are going to be getting less than they need. So I suppose if I completely understood why they are advocating for the cost equity, I might feel differently, but they've yet to explain it in a way that makes any sense to me. And I understand the math behind it. But and I'd be happy to go over it in detail with with any of you. But it just from an equity perspective, it does not work.
Maybe be more, you know, direct. I think that politics plays into it where there are, you know, some members from communities that feel that the any change is going to be detrimental to taxpayers in their district, which is, you know, respectful to advocate on behalf of them, of course, but I think that comes with also the notion that districts that have been historically underweighted by the current education finance system are not going to invest and instead are going to just realize, you know, tax savings, which I think is detached from the reality and the ground and a lot of the districts that have have need and need, you know, greater or more equitable access to funds. So in some ways, I've joked in our meetings and said it's a very paternalistic, you know, system of trying to mandate that that's going to be done. I don't think our business managers or superintendents would love the idea than having to, you know, account for how this is spent. And I think it would add complexity to, you know, it may simplify the formula, but I think would add an immense amount of complexity to the day to day operations of a supervisor union or particularly a school district.
Thanks for that. And so that the boards are aware, there was a comparison chart that came out. I think it was last week by Brad James with the AOE that went to Ways and Means. And for Montpelier, you're looking at weights versus cost equity when modeling that against our FY20 spending would be looking at like a 10 and a half percent increase in taxes with the weighting versus like 15.1% in terms of cost equity to get at what Rory was just talking about.
Wait, with the weighting?
It's about 10 and a half percent.
And with the cost equity, it's
15%.
So more.
Yes.
Okay.
Just in terms of a local taxpayer impact.
Right. Yes.
For Montpelier Rox.
Higher impact on the tax rate with the with the cost equity, also known as grants.
Yes.
Okay.
But then there's, they also had a, and I can send this to everybody. There was also, they also modeled the ELL grant plus the weights. And I'm not certain, I don't think the original weight had a weight for ELL. So
Oh, okay.
And that's in the middle. It's like 12% for taxpayers of Montpelier Roxbury.
Okay.
If you'd like, I could pull up the slide that has all the information for Montpelier that that you're speaking of.
Sure.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. While he's doing that, I have a question for us, which is, are we deciding something tonight? Or are we, we're just taking the information in, what's our?
I mean, I think we can talk about that. What are the decision points?
Well, I would be interested in passing a resolution to join the coalition.
That that seems like, well, can I ask a clarifying question of the coalition? Is there a way to endorse what you are advocating for in the legislature without formally joining the coalition? I'm just curious. I'm not like, I'm just trying to know what our options are. Or is it like, join this coalition because we are advocating for for this certain model in the legislature?
I'd say the latter, you know, for us to be able to to give the number of students and a number of districts that that have joined is impactful to legislators. So on this slide, it's showing the tax rates, which are are used kind of as a proxy for taxing capacity, just because it's easier for people to understand. And all the way on the left hand side is your tax rate from FY20. And that may be slightly off from what you saw on your tax bills, only because that does not include any Act 46 incentives or any excess spending penalty amounts. Then in column A, you have the weights that were recommended by the task force along with ELL as a categorical grant. Column B are the weights with ELL as a weight. So the entire package of weights. Then column C is your cost equity with using ELL weight number to come up with a dollar figure. So it's still a grant. And then column D is kind of, it it's from the original report. So the original model that was recommended, the task force made some policy changes that that changed the weights. But you can see what it would, what you would have been if they were to implement the weights from the report. And then the last column is the your ELL grant number, should it be a grant in column A and C? And it's approximately $24,000 per ELL student. And for you, it's, you know, $1.2 million, which is substantial.
So are you saying that bottom left number is what?
Bottom right?
Thought, thank you, bottom right number is what Montpelier would receive if it was ELL grant?
So yeah, that bottom row are all the numbers for your district.
Yeah.
Most of them based on Brad James' most recent documents. So if they were to go with the weights with ELL as a grant or with cost equity, the the cost equity payment or the grant payment that you would receive for ELL is at 1.2 million.
Okay. Thank you for explaining all of that. It's very, very helpful that you walked us through that.
The hybrid model that you're that you're most in favor of is not represented here in these columns, correct?
Um, no.
Come up with that number.
Right. So that would be, it would be column B. Plus, if you had fewer than 25 ELL students, you'd receive an additional $25,000 to $50,000 as a grant.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the 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 way the $24,000 per ELL student was figured was based on the weights, was based on the 2.49 weight. So it's, while the math doesn't work out exactly, it's relatively fair to say that you're gonna the amount that would be received in taxing capacity by districts is going to be in that neighborhood of 24, $25,000 per ELL student with the weights. It just won't be in a, in a single check that you receive from from the state.
And what's the number on the bottom row? Just so clear is that?
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
Yeah.
How the tax rate would different is the 1.512, 2020 now, those numbers, what they would be under the various proposals?
Correct. And it's all based on FY20 numbers. The the task force chose to use FY20 because that was a complete set of numbers and it was prior to the pandemic. So didn't, didn't have all the federal funds involved.
So I have one more question as well. So it looks like it's about a one and a half cent increase on the tax rate. Roughly is what we're looking at. If we, if we, yeah, if we support, if we support the coalition, if we join the coalition, that's sort of what the model that we're looking at. Grant, our business manager had said at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting, that that there's a possibility, or maybe it was Libby that said there's a possibility of sort of
It's about 16 cents.
Oh, 16 cents. Sorry.
It's like a 10% increase.
I hate to give you the bad news, but.
Okay, I'm not reading the numbers right. So anyway, they said that they would maybe roll that out over the course of several years or a few years as like, it would be like a slow introduction of this new rate rather than all at once. How would that work?
Well, they haven't worked out the details yet, but they will be rolling, the transition period will be somewhere between three to five years. Just to give you some reference to that, Act 60 was rolled in in three years and Act 46 was rolled in in five years. But it will be a roll in period so that both districts that are receiving additional taxing capacity and are losing some taxing capacity have the time to make the changes necessary in order to to utilize the taxing capacity that they have available. There may be some additional funds that are available to help districts that will be losing taxing capacity. But none of that has been kind of feathered out yet. You know, there are federal funds. There's a surplus in the education fund, but I wouldn't count on that. I'm just letting you know that it is a possibility, but I absolutely would not count on that happening.
And I just want to clarify for folks, and we're talking about losing tax capacity. We've seen that even in the past year in a city like Burlington where tax rates went up considerably. They had a really important bond vote that did not get, that did not pass as a result of those increased rates. So, you know, there are, that's just an example of the type of issue.
Just to, just to add to that, Andrew, I'm sorry to jump in, but it it doesn't matter if they, if the legislature choose equity or category, or sorry, why are you saying that? To change the weights or categorical grants, because either way, we are going to have increased tax burden. It just doesn't matter for Montpelier Roxbury.
Right.
Equitable weights are saying that the statewide soups in any way support quite a bit. That's the one to go for here going forward.
And most districts benefit from these proposals, period, right? It's like, I think it's like two thirds of districts. And what I say by benefit, I'm talking about from a tax capacity perspective. I want to be clear for everybody. What that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if for two thirds of districts, it will make it more affordable for their taxpayers to fund education. And for a third of districts, they will, they will take on that additional tax burden, right? We're talking about a closed loop system. And Montpelier is one of them that would see the tax increase. Mark, do you, right now, and I don't know the answer to this, I haven't looked closely, but I have followed your general work and I do appreciate it. Are there any other districts similar to Montpelier in terms of the tax capacity situation that have joined your organization? Because I do understand, I do think it would be pretty simple.
So Washington Central is another district that was overweight. They were overweight in the the original in the original report, they're a little bit closer to even with the modified weights. And the same with with Peacham, which obviously is not similar to to you all, but 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 they did join knowing that they were overweight. While my own district, which is River Valley's school district down southern Vermont, while the district itself would probably see a slight increase in taxing capacity. My own town, which is Dover, would actually see a tax increase. And so there are, we do have districts that that and towns that have joined because they believe it's the right thing. So I hope that answers your question.
Hi, so my question, this was my train of thought. I guess my question is, so and this is maybe going a couple steps back to the study and the findings of the study that's more equitably educator students across the state that we needed to bump up the weights, that those were 20 years out of date. And I'm curious, as we look at what those bump ups are, you know, how significant are they? You know, and I know this is the work of PhDs and and things, but do we feel like the bump ups are adequate? And I'm curious, from your perspective, Libby, do you see like an immediate use for those funds? If we're talking about bump ups in the categories of ELL, students are experiencing poverty. And if you all might actually just clarify where we're seeing the increases in in the weights. And then, Libby, I'd just be interested to hear from you if you have any like immediate sense of how we might dedicate those funds. So like Jim was saying, that we know that it's actually, it's getting to the students and the programs that that really need it.
We won't have a through, through whatever happens, one of these two things is going to happen and we won't have any additional tax capacity to play with. So that's, I don't know how to answer your question because there isn't an answer to it. We won't, we will have to figure out how to maintain the capacity we have with a higher tax burden.
Yeah, so we're likely have to raise taxes to keep the same level of services.
That's helpful to understand.
Yeah, but that's the raise it like 10, 15%.
Yeah.
Which
They though, Andrew, it may not be as high as what, because you're using 2020 guidelines, right? Your 2020 taxes and pupil counts and all that kind of stuff. And we've had a significant increase in our population of English language learners because of the the families from Afghanistan who've moved into the district. So it's not exactly that. It's a model, right? So but but either either way, we will be thinking about as a board and administrative team, how do we understand our new tax burden with the capacity of need we have? It will be just be having that conversation. Luckily, it will also most likely be combined with a new SLA with appraisals coming in. For the next.
And a follow up question to that is, and I don't know if you've run the numbers, but for towns like Montpelier, when we raise the taxes, I think we're a town that can afford to generally raise the taxes. With the exception of there's, you know, as we raise taxes, Montpelier is already a tough place for people of lower income to live. Do the, does kind of the current Do the, does kind of the current property tax relief and income sensitivity adjust for it? So, I mean, I have a bit of a fear that this might make, you know, towns that are already somewhat not economically diverse more exclusive, because there's a higher burden to, to housing and to entry. Now, the current system, if you earn between, uh, the householders, between what, forty-seven thousand and a hundred thirty thousand? Um, they, that, those households would see the same increase as those who pay purely on property tax, so, it's lesser than those who pay solely based on their property value, but the increase might, so if they were paying four thousand dollars instead of eight thousand dollars, they would see a four hundred dollar increase. Yeah.
But, that's gonna happen with either scenario.
Yes, yes.
Or any of the.
Totally.
Okay, so, I, getting back to what are we doing to, with all of this information tonight, I'm also fully on board with joining the coalition. I mean, our superintendent is already advocating for the same position that they are advocating for. It will, it will strengthen the coalition to have a town that is in that one-third for whom the tax rate will change in the, you know, negative, or however we wanna say that, increased tax burden. And while they have, it sounds like they have momentum now, um, they may run into some challenges once it gets into the House, and having the weight of a district like Montpelier as part of the coalition, I think, would really, um, benefit the, their efforts. And it feels like, honestly, not only are their efforts the most equitable way to handle, um, distributing education funds throughout the state, but it's also like, not, that, what they are advocating for is not that much different, not, not any, not, while, while Montpelier and Roxbury as a district may stand to have a, a higher tax burden as a result of all of the efforts that are happening, what this coalition is advocating for is actually not any more detrimental to us, I, it feels like a no-brainer to me for us to join this coalition.
Brett?
Um, I just have a question about, we're, I'm hearing us say we're talking about two choices, but I heard three choices. So, when we talk about weights, are we talking about weights with the grant, meaning the hybrid model? Or are we talking about weights without the grant? And is there any way of knowing how many districts have less than twenty-five ELL students? Because that kind of matters for those places, and it doesn't change my support for this, but I'm just curious, how many districts have less than? Is there a way to know that? Is it something that's estimated? Is it data that's public? Is it not legal to make it public?
Right, the legal, the end size is eleven, so anybody above eleven would have to report it out, or would be okay to report it out. Um, the other thing I would say is, is typically, and Mark, please correct me around, because you probably know way more than I do about this, but typically, if there's a low population of English language learners, there are other weights that would also help that district. Typically, maybe in more rural places.
That, that is often the case, um, it's not, definitely not always the case. Um, and, and I can give you, um, the, the numbers are, are public, um, as, as Libby mentioned, if you give me a minute, I can pull up, um, I can pull up some numbers for you, um, I just don't have them right in front of me.
No, it's okay, I mean, so when we talk about weights, we're talking about weights with the grant, we're talking about the hybrid model?
We're talking about, yeah, we're talking about, um, all of the weights, and then on top of it for ELL, you'd have the, um, the, the small grant, um, for low.
For the small, for the smaller communities, for people with a small number, because you can't have a successful program without,
Some kind of law.
You need a full-time teacher.
And we anticipate there'll be more districts that, that have an increasing number of, of students as, you know, Afghans move in and, and, and other communities, um, like that.
About?
Yeah, and we, we also have, uh, outside of the revenue coalition, we do have a lot of farm workers living in some of the rural areas too, that have a lot of family, so it's not, this is not just our refugee community, but it's also supporting our migrant farm workers and their children. Um, so I, I, I would love to join the coalition for many reasons, one, because this is moving our equity work forward with other school districts for the state. These are like-minded boards that, you know, have equity at the forefront, it just delivers by the resources and the amount of people who have different voices, uh, that bring different voices to these conversations, all united in one front, so I think, I think it's, uh, for me at least, it's a great, I would love to join.
Other questions, and then we can maybe move to discussion about action? Well, thanks, everyone, the presentation was super, super helpful, we really appreciate the perspectives and the answers to the questions, this is really important work you're doing, and, uh, appreciate all the, all the, I know this, for most of you, this is volunteer time, we put it to, really appreciate all the, all the, the effort, um, and engagement that, that you've done, uh, and again, thank you, thank you so much for, for coming tonight.
Thank you for, uh, for inviting us, um, we really appreciate, uh, um, the invitation and for you considering joining, um, it would be a pleasure to have you as members, um, and, uh, while I hope you do join, um, even if you don't, any of you are more than welcome to join, um, uh, and attend our meetings, um, and, and participate.
Actually, can I ask one question on the, the decision point, um, before us this evening? What is the role of the, what, what is the role of each of the districts, like, what is the opportunity for input, like, you get what I'm saying, Mark, like, so we join on, obviously, that, there is like the symbolism there, but, you know, what is, what is the commitment? Do we have individuals who regularly attend your meetings, do, do, are we involved in strategy, you know? What is, what is the involvement, what does that look like?
As much or as little as you'd like, um, quite honestly, um, I, I would hope that, um, at least one of your members would attend, we, we have, um, we do meet every Thursday, um, for about an hour, um, we meet from five to six PM. More than one of you are more than welcome to attend, you're all welcome to attend, um, we don't have any, any kind of, um, formal process. Um, we get together and we discuss, uh, we, we get updates from the, the lobbyist, and we discuss, um, any decision points, um, and we make a decision as a, as a group. We, we really have, have all, i- i- it's pretty amazing, um, the coalition is, is made up of, of districts from kind of every walk of life in Vermont. It's, it's a, a unique group, um, especially as far as, um, education goes, um, in this state, um, to have so many people, uh, agreeing on, you know, something that is so important and, and so important to the state.
Can I just add that I've been really grateful for this coalition, because it's a school district that has a very high ELL. When the task force first recommended the weights without ELL, a lot of the school districts could have left and said like, no, we're, we're, we're happy with what the task recommendations, and actually, all them came out strong and said, that is ridiculous, that they would think about like leaving out the ELL students as a weight. And, and, and I think that's what makes this coalition really special, is that like, our goal is equity for all students. And I think that's why the coalition is Coalition for Vermont Student Equity.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
And, uh, if we do join, just let you know, Mark.
Yeah.
To it.
Um, you send me an email, um, I, I'm happy to, to hang around, I know Alex needs to, to go, and Rory has a, a family to, um, probably to, to go to, but, um, I'm happy to hang around if, if you'd like, um, further, um, to answer any questions, um, but yeah, you just let us know. My email is, is on the presentation. Yeah, it's, it's really a pretty simple process.
So I think we also have one other question on the table here, which is, uh, you know, tonight, do we also make a donation? You know, so there could be a motion to have the resolution to join the coalition with the donation, or just, or separately to join, and we could discuss the donation at a later point. I don't know, I have those, the sample resolutions in front of me, so I can, um, read one if people are feeling one way or the other about that.
Can you send it, you know, resolution?
Yeah.
Joe had her hand up.
I was just wondering if we were taking action, or since this was discussion only, if we weren't voting to join the coalition?
We can definitely take action.
Yeah, we should take action. Well, thanks.
Uh, So, yeah, someone said, put a motion on the table, we can put a motion on the table and then discuss it, uh,
I'm moved to join the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity.
I second.
We have discussion. Yeah, we have that discussion. I wanna just, so, my general thought on this, and I feel like I should kind of step back, it's my last meeting, but I, I think there's a lot of merit to this proposal, and I think there's a lot of value that could be added for both this board and, and that commission by having us on there, there really is no other, I mean, for, for this organization, there really is no other district that's in a situation like ours, that's true. Uh, and so I understand, you know, this idea that something's gonna move along, but my understanding is that there are a lot of other districts in RC from a tax perspective, that are, um, not trying to be a part of this process. So I think that is, you know, that's, I, I think that's a really big deal, and I think it's a big deal for this organization and its whole movement, and it is a movement that I personally support at a statewide level. My only concern about this board right now is I feel like this board, and, and I might be off-base here, but I feel like this board could use to better understand the situation a little bit better, but if people feel like they have the understanding they need to move forward, I'm not gonna get people's way on that. I do think it's, it's going, I think how this is implemented could be a really big deal for this community, though. You know, if, if we do have a ten to fifteen percent, uh, increase in tax, we'll cut it. And I just think it's important.
Yeah, and to go back to Mia's point, it's, and what Libby said is, um, either option that the state moves, I mean, there's momentum behind this, that changing the weighting. And so, either way, either direction that the state decides to go is going to be a, a pretty similar increase on our taxpayers. Um, and in fact, and maybe I, I was moving decimal points around earlier, so, it sounded to me like it was going to be actually less of an increase if we go with the coalition's recommendations.
It is.
So I'm not sure why our community wouldn't be supportive of that. Um, and, and, and I think, like, what Amanda said, is sort of leading with our values around equity is what's driving my interest in, in joining the coalition.
I'm kind of interested to hear from other people who have.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I'm eighty-five percent there, and I definitely go to board, the, I mean, my only hesitation is one hesitation, yeah, well, I, I don't, I feel we, I feel that, Mark, everyone, you've done great work, I also feel you come in with a perspective, and it would be great to hear from a neutral perspective, just to, you know, someone who does not have a stake to give a comparison, because it's very complex, and I don't fully understand it, everything you said makes sense, and I trust in your word, but, you know, usually when I make a decision like this, I like to hear multiple perspectives, and certainly perspective for someone who ever would count as, as not part of a group that already has a stated position, that's my hesitation, but my, my instinct is that it would probably confirm what the first time. But I don't know that disaster.
If I could just say one thing, I, I don't know that you'd find a neutral person, um, to, to speak to.
I, yeah, I know, or even like in front of you, but I, I'm thinking even someone like, you know, um, a legislator who's been deep into it, who, who might be able to, at least, kind of tell us about the voices they're hearing.
Well, the, the, both, both, the, the co-chairs of the, um, of the task force would, I, I, I'm not gonna speak for them, but it wouldn't surprise me if they'd be willing to come in and, and speak to you.
Another recommendation I can make, Senator Perchlik was part of the task force and sits on the Senate Education Committee, and as representing Washington County, he came and spoke about this to the Cabot School Board in December.
Yeah, I, I, Andy advised.
Yeah, he, he spoke to us along with the rest of, most of the rest of our representation a few meetings ago, not specifically on this issue, it was more of a broad conversation.
Well, I would also say that there's a lot of YouTube, of the, every legislative session where this topic has come up, so all the voices are there, if you want to just take the time, you know, you could streamline to the party one. Maybe school board meeting on it.
Can, can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Say that, like, all the voices have come to the Senate Education Committee, so if we wanna just do a list of all the people that spoke there, so you can get a sense of what the conversations is there, I mean, that's a little bit of more, it's a little bit work versus like, string one more voice here. You know, I, I, I agree that there, I don't think there's gonna be a neutral person that's gonna, that we're gonna find, if that's what we're trying to find.
Hello?
Joe? I think, um, I was, I was very similar to you, Jim, that I'm, I'm pretty compelled and also hesitant to sort of jump on the bandwagon when it's really exciting in the moment. But, um, as someone who spends a lot of time in those committees and has watched education legislation over the years, I'm, I, I know I say this a lot, that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I like the idea of being part of an informed coalition that shares, um, our understanding and our approach, and that would inform us as a board, and obviously has eyes and ears. Um, and I think also what was really compelling for me is to hear that, um, I'm pretty sure the School Boards Association is also trying to steer the legislature back to the original proposal, to hear that the superintendents are largely aligned in that way. I think it's, it's pretty glaring that, that there's pretty large-scale alarm about where this could go. And to your point, Emma, about if, if, if Montpelier is, is going to feel the impacts of this one way or the other, I'd like us to be part of, um, part of a group, like I said, that's informed, and that, um, that sort of helps the state as a whole, and may in fact selfishly also help our district more than some others, so, I'm, um, I'm, I'm in support of joining the coalition tonight, it's helpful.
There is also a time factor here, too, where, and Mark mentioned this before, it's gonna be coming out of Senate finance soon. And I, I, I don't know this, but I speculate the reason why it's in the Senate is because it's more regional, rather than in the House, there's gonna be a lot of skirmishes. Um, it's because it's at, at, at more micro level, which is where these impacts are, are, are felt, uh, more acutely. So, there is that factor to this as well. Which I said sooner, yeah, no, I'm more beneficial, I think I'm pretty much there, I, I just, I just wanna put out there that someone asked me if I'd really done my homework and, and fully understood this decision, I'd have to say not as much as I would have liked.
Can we push a decision to the next board line, board meeting, let's give it a, you know, a, a timeline, that, I mean, I'm hearing that we also, there's, there's an urgency,
Yeah.
um, uh, in terms of moving from Senate to House. It is two weeks.
I'm worried that with the vacation, and we did discuss it at the last meeting, Andrew brought up the same concern, and I invited Andrew to try to find somebody to come to speak at this meeting. I'm worried, and, and, you know, provided a lot of resources for people to educate themselves between the last board meeting and this board meeting. And so I'm worried that that won't happen again, and that people will feel pretty similar at the next board meeting that they do at this board meeting. So I'm concerned about pushing it ahead with also the vacation and the timeliness that Andrew talked about of movement in the legislature.
And they also, they take the week between, the week of town meeting off from lawmaking, and then usually the week after that, or the week after that, is what's called crossover, where it has to have gone to the other side. I'm very concerned about the slide that showed where the four different major money and education committees are in such different places.
Yeah.
So I'm a little worried that in two weeks, a lot is gonna happen, and I hate to put that pressure, but that's.
No, let's, let's do it then. If, if, it's, from my perspective, it's, it's, it's very symbolic, there's no other, there's no other district that's in our position, that's driving this coalition.
And we also don't have to have a unanimous vote on this, right? It just has to be majority.
Yeah, and I would go, I would go, yes, yeah.
I mean, but if people aren't comfortable, you could abstain and, or not, or vote against it.
I would just add that it's a coalition, which means that we can give input if things changes, we can be part of the conversation. And so that it is not, we're not voting, hey, yes, Mark, we, everything that you're going to do, we will be part of the conversation. And ensuring that the conversation flows. So I think that, I mean, I I just. Don't skip. I will, yes.
Should we move to a vote?
Yeah. All's a member? Any opposed? Right. Thank you so much, Mark. You can put us down.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Rory.
And thank you all very much.
I would like to talk about potentially making a donation at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mark. And Amanda, thank you for suggesting this. It was just like two weeks ago in Roxbury that you really pushed us to hear from these folks. So thank you for making that happen.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you for for joining. We do have a an email list where we send out kind of updates as well as a weekly update from the. From our lobbyists. Which we welcome all of you to join, any of you kind of. Don't force anything on anybody, but we absolutely would would appreciate your participation in in meetings. Would be a big help and thank you. I think it will make a, definitely make a difference, makes a statement as as you mentioned.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're ready to go into executive session. Not for negotiations, it just needs a simple motion. For. For this of super personnel and.
Personnel evaluation, we should say, personnel evaluation.
And the students.
Right, so moved.
Second, second. Question, all the favor.
Hi.
Thanks, I guess we got a.
One, room 126 is locked before. But we can find a classroom.
For these two representative spots. Required, you came tonight. It's really, really a tough decision because you're also incredible and I think you're a great representative of the Montpelier. Roxbury school community. And so we're all thrilled and excited to have two of you be joining us. I do want to say that we discussed, you know, the momentum involved with people having interests right now. In serving in this capacity and that we can harness, harness that momentum and potentially, you know. Build some systems, maybe a subcommittee where the two student representatives could sort of lead a process. By which all the students who were interested to serve as the two appointed positions could still have a voice and be involved. So I will reach out to Matt McLean on that and we'll sort of brainstorm together with the two student representatives about how best to do that. But we definitely want people to stay involved. The other point that was brought up in executive session is that no senior, no seniors applied, which is actually great for us. Because that leaves this possibility of any of you applying again to be a student representative in the fall. So please keep that in mind. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Merrick Modun and Zach Henningson as the two student representatives to the Montpelier Roxbury School Board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, in terms of the timeline, because we just talked about in the fall, doing this again, what is the timeline of this appointment?
We discussed it during the other, during regular session, which was that this appointment would be through the school year. So these two appointments run through the school year and then we'll have another process to appoint two more for the next school year. And I'm not sure at that time if we want to potentially do it as a semester long appointments or if we want to do.
The past has had as a full year.
Yeah.
Which I think is.
And so the first meetings. Invited to us as members would be the day after town meeting. Yep, our second, March 2nd, Wednesday, March 2nd, and it will be here at the Montpelier High School Library.
Great.
Thank you again to everyone. Really appreciate all of your.
Do we need to have a vote? Oh, yeah. Or any more discussion?
All's a member?
Hi.
Any opposed? Yes, so thank you so much. And now I need a vote to go back into executive session. But yeah, really.
Thank you both so much.
Yeah, thank you.
We look forward to having you at the next meeting and definitely let's keep brainstorming ways to keep everybody involved. So we're just, you know, really excited to have all of your voices.
Yeah, absolutely. And I want to encourage, you know, everyone who who submitted and didn't get chosen to, you know, stay involved. And I think we'll work with with Merrick and Zach to figure out ways to do that. And then, you know, as as Emma noted, you know, we will be doing this. Most of you will have one, if not two or three more times to to serve. And hopefully we can get, get all of you on on the board before graduating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Good night. I believe we.
We go back.
Go back into executive section for the purpose of discussing personnel evaluation.
Second.
A second.
All's a favor. All right, good.
Okay.
All right, now.
Now we.
Now, Horka.
Yes.